Hello all, we are here for the June 1st, 2021, meeting of the Winter Town Council. For those of you who would like to join us by phone, you can join us by dialing 1301-715-8592. And the passcode is 858-178-82137. Again, the phone number is 1301-715-3592. Passcode is 858-178-82137. Okay, and with that, I will call the meeting to order. And I will ask Councillor DiMarco to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will, we will now take up the minutes. We will do a roll call. Denise, will you please do a roll call?
Here, Councillor Ruggiero.
Here.
Councillor Flackett.
Here.
Councillor DiMarco.
Here.
Councillor Terry.
Yeah.
Councillor Honan.
Yeah.
Councillor Conti. Councillor Frino.
Yeah.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the minutes. The minutes have been circulated to the members of the council. Are there any additions, detractions, or amendments to the minutes that were circulated? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll for the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Councillor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Councillor Flackett.
Yes.
Councillor DiMarco.
Yes.
Councillor Terry.
Yes.
Councillor Honan.
Yes.
Councillor LaConte. Councillor Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, under general information and recommendations, is an update on the water loss study. So we have a presentation on that. Chief, would you like to maybe give us some background on this?
Sure, I'll certainly invite Steve Callard to chime in since he's probably more familiar. This project got started prior to my taking over there as interim town manager. It was the desire of the administration and I believe the council to examine the way we actually bill for water and sewer.
Recording in progress.
And see if we could make sure that we're spending the taxpayers' money appropriately, making sure that we captured all of our losses and that, you know, any increases are justified and necessary. Steve, I'll invite Director Callar to add to those comments and then we'll turn it over to the presenters.
Yeah, Terry, I mean, you hit it pretty well. They've brought in with Anna's direction and support to basically look at unaccounted-for water, to take a look at our rate structure. And basically, you know, an audit of our billing procedures and the procedures of the Water Department and Sewer Department in general. But I'll turn it over to Mark Abrams and Ryan, and they can give you a full in-depth presentation.
You're both muted.
Thank you. I'm Mark Abrahams, president of the Abrahams Group. This evening, we have Ryan Trahan and Matt Abrahams to present. We would like to briefly update you on the status of A, the water mitigation tasks, and B, where we are with the water and sewer rate. So I will turn this over to Ryan, who will brief you on the water loss. And after that, Matt will update you on the water and sewer rates.
Thank you. And Matt, I believe you're going to share a presentation?
Yes.
Good evening. Matt, I think you're showing the present presenter view.
Okay. How do I change that? Hang on.
I think if you step through like that, I can at least start. So, as you know, our cooperation with the Abrahams Group is to perform the water audit as part of this project. And we've made some progress, although we still have some work to do. As you know, we, the goal here is to try to identify where the real and apparent water losses are happening. We're utilizing the American Water Works manual on water audits and also the water loss control software. We're stepping through that right now. We're looking at the existing customer meters and looking at meter sizes and age. We've noted that the DPW has done a great job working through its meter replacement program, looking at source calibration, source water meter calibration records, which is working with the MWA. And we're still waiting to hear back from them, essentially how frequently that they're going out and making sure that the meter, that the water you're purchasing is accurate. So we have to, we're still waiting to hear back from them. We're looking at different sources of un-metered consumption, like fire protection, hydrant flushing, storage tank draining, or overflowing hydrant usage. So these are the types of things that we look at. We look at the leak detection program, the history, how often the leaks are repaired once they're found, and also the unaccounted-for calculations that have been done over the years in comparison to the annual statistics reports that are filed each year. So that's where we're going through. So far, what we found is we have gone through all the records that we've received so far. We have a couple outstanding items. And again, I mentioned the voiding on the MWA records for the source meter. We're nearly completed with the entire software program, which essentially will give us the areas to concentrate our research and efforts. And then also just waiting for the hard copy map, which I believe should be sent soon. Next one, Matt. So sometimes the largest apparent or real loss that can happen is with estimating water use that happens throughout a municipality, or just from someone opening a hydrant, or through a leak. So that's something that we're kind of putting our finger on to look at more closely. We noticed that the DPW has done a great job stepping through their meter program. Newer meters, as you know, are much more accurate than older meters that can be in place for over 10 to 20 years. We're just, we're going to be looking more closely at a potential testing program or anything for meters larger than one inch that would be the old-style meters if there's any left. But newer meters nowadays with technology don't need as much calibration. And we'll also be looking at ways that they can modernize record-keeping and doing invoices and bills to customers. And that way, that'll help with the ability to calculate if it's just an apparent loss almost on paper, or if it's actual real loss, like a leak program, that would need to be fixed, those leaks to help recover that water loss. So that's where we are with our conclusions to date. And right now, I think Matt and Mark will talk a little bit more about the progress on the actual rate setting.
So I'd like to begin with a cautionary note. We are going to show you some numbers, they are not final. The manager will be setting rates mid-month, but we want to give you a sense of A, where we are in the process, B, the workbook we use, the data that we have compiled, and C, where we are relative to the rates. So just briefly, our scope was to review the capital program, project water and sewer costs, develop non-meter revenue requirements to get to how much money had to be recovered through metered rates, develop consumption estimates and review the billing system, develop a five-year analysis. Even though you, as a town, will be setting rates for fiscal '22, we like to look out five years. And that gives us the added advantage of a multi-year analysis to help formulate decisions on the current year. And then lastly, to update water and sewer rates, and then project the revenue and conduct an impact analysis. So Matt's going to briefly walk you through those steps. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Matt Abrahams from the Abrahams Group. Just one thing to add to the scope, it's not really listed here as a detailed item, but we are going to look at the possibility of implementing a tier structure because right now, water and sewer charges are a flat-rate structure and have been for some time. We have not begun yet the analysis on the tier structure, but we plan to do that in the future. So all numbers that are presented tonight are still focused on the flat-rate structure. So we do have some slides for you this evening, just a few. There are numbers, as Mark mentioned, just to give you an update on where we are, some of the things that we've been looking at, and then ultimately to start focusing on a rate for FY '22. But like Mark said, with a five-year look in mind, and you'll see what we mean by that momentarily. So even though we're looking forward for FY '22, we also do like to take a look at where we are currently for the current fiscal year and historically as well in the recent past. But this slide is focused on the current fiscal year, which is FY '21. So retain earnings was last certified at just over $60,000, $670,000, which works out to be 6.5% of the FY '21 expenditure budget. That's the water and sewer budget total. It's one enterprise fund. Thinking about what's happened recently, we are in still a pandemic. And if we think back to the warmer months of last year, 2020, it was very dry. And that usually has an impact on water and sewer usage and billings as well. So we have seen, definitely seen an impact in most of the communities that we've worked, that we work with on water and sewer. Winthrop is no different. Usage we have is up 5% over the prior year, and billings up over 8.4%. And keep in mind that that does include a rate increase that was implemented, I believe, last year around this time. Collections, we have been taking a look at collections because when we do projections, we have to take, when we do financial projections, we have to consider what money is coming through the door. So for collections, we noticed that in recent years, it's been below 88%, which I think is a little bit of an abnormality and Winthrop probably most heavily impacted by the pandemic. But when we did look at the FY '21 commitments recently, we saw that it was trending back towards 90% and actually was up over 90%. So I think there's been some speculation that it's going to end up back in the 90% area, but we have seen recently 88% with some of the numbers we looked at. For debt, the budgeted amount for water and sewer debt combined, I believe, was $1.6 million. But the actual payments are $1.2 million. So that may impact the retained earnings balance at the end of FY '21. And we're looking, we believe there's going to be a surplus of over $900,000. Again, there's an impact there from the billings being up, also the debt payments not being as high as the budgeted amount. And we think retained earnings will end up being over $1.5 million, which is over 15% of the FY '21 expenditure budget. So that's looking at the current year, let's start to look forward a little bit. So as Mark mentioned, we do do a five-year analysis with our water and sewer analyses. And we have done one for Winthrop as well. So the MWRA assessments, the preliminary numbers are available. The final ones are not yet available, I believe, so we're working off of the preliminary numbers. And the dry summer of 2020 impacts the FY '22 assessments. And we see them, that they have gone up. Water is up $125,000, 6.4% over the prior year's assessment. Sewer up $144,000, 3.9% over the '21 assessment. Budget debt for water is up $122,000 over FY '21. Sewer debt is down slightly. And we've taken a look, as was part of our scope, which was mentioned a few minutes ago, at the capital plan and its impact. So the town does have a robust capital plan that covers multiple years into the future. I believe it goes out to FY '27, the latest version that we reviewed. We want to make sure we're factoring in expenditures related to that capital plan when we're looking forward. And we've done that. So the capital plan impact, as we understand it, is $750,000 per year with a water-led line replacement project. That's each year FY '22 through FY '26, that's been included in our analysis. And the town does MWRA loans for those projects. Would note, I think there are zero interest loans. And I also think that there's been at least one of those projects in the recent past as well. For sewer INI, there's one project, $250,000 FY '22. There's some retained earnings funding, $111,000 for FY '22. That's three projects or items listed in the capital plan. And not yet listed in the capital plan, but likely to be. Our anticipated additional sewer projects were including $500,000 per year from FY '23 through '26. This is anticipated as a result of the INI work that's been done recently, or is going to be done recently, is going to be done. And that, those projects we're currently carrying also is MWRA loans, but the 75% grant, 25% loan option that the town typically gets. The water audit, the information that Ryan shared earlier, our numbers do not yet reflect any impact there. We just wanted to make that clear. But we are under the assumption that that could have a major impact on future expenditures. So something to keep in mind as we look at these numbers. All right, so here's your first look at some projected total numbers. So this is our baseline scenario, and what we mean by baseline is really a do-nothing scenario. We compile what we think all the non-rates revenue is going to be. We compile what we think all the expenditures are going to be, all the projections related to those things, and we keep rates neutral, no changes. And this is what it looks like. So we have total revenues for you for FY '22 through '26. These are our latest projections, understanding, as Mark said earlier, that these are not final numbers, but these are where we are currently with our analysis. Total expenditures, you'll see the expenditures are going up, as you would anticipate. And also, just so everyone understands, we do have a detailed Excel workbook that backs up all of these numbers that we use to compile all these numbers. There's the comparison, the surplus deficit line is the comparison between the two numbers. So you get a sense of projected deficits each year with no rate changes. And you can see for FY '22, based on conservative flow estimates and a conservative collections rate as well, we're anticipating a projected deficit of just under $400,000 in FY '22 with no rate action. And the graph at the bottom is, it shows you retained earnings. We, the orange line represents a targeted number, and the blue line represents where our projections are based on the numbers that are presented in the table. So you can see that retained earnings stays above the target, but then it starts to trend and goes well below the target with no rate action. And updated numbers based on a five-year rate plan. This is the rate plan that we've currently have in our workbook. And everything from the prior slide is the exact same, except now we're including additional revenues from rates because of the rate plan that we've introduced here on the top row of the top table. So with a rate plan, with a rate change of 4% in FY '22, we are projecting that revenues are basically equal to expenditures, as you can see by that bottom number, the deficit of just over $5,000. And we like to look out five years, as we've already mentioned, even though rate setting is just for FY '22 right now, just so that when decisions are made, future years are in mind. And you can see with the rate plan that we presented here, 4% in year one, 3% in the subsequent years, that revenue is basically equal expenditures in each year. They're close. The graph has been updated to show you that now the blue line is trending, is trending around the orange line and ultimately ends up equaling it by FY '26. And then we've included a table just to show dollar impact on certain user groups. You can see the usage, these are per-bill amounts, and what the current bill is for those users, and what the projected FY '22 bill would be based on the 4% change. And those were all the slides and information we had planned to present tonight, but we're happy to take questions or comments.
Great, thank you very much for that presentation. Do any members of the council have any questions for the presenters? Councillor Terry.
Thank you, Vice President, and thank you guys for the presentation. So my question is, I think early on in the presentation, it was mentioned that we were waiting for the MWRA to get back to us to see how the meter was working. My impression was we were going to ask to have a replacement meter. I think the MWRA has been an incredible partner with the town of Winthrop for as long as they've been there, and we appreciate all they do. But we, you know, we're talking about an awful lot of money here. And, you know, one of the things we wanted to do was to make sure that, you know, just to knock it off the list, that that metering was working well. And I thought we were going to do a replacement meter, which I understood was a significant amount of money. But I don't think we should be waiting for them to tell us that the meter is working well. Is that, did I misunderstand that?
I'm not aware of the replacement of the meter. We usually reach out to MWRA when we do water audits and ask for all the history for calibration records and PTO test data. And that's what we're, the information that we're waiting on from the engineer at the MWA.
So we're just relying on the information they give us to tell us if the calibration is right or wrong?
Yes, then we can look at the amount sold versus the corrected amount through the calibration efforts and see if it matches up.
Great. Are there any other questions from the councillors? Councillor Farino?
Thank you. I just was wondering, so how far are you in this process? There's another couple of meetings you're going to have with us? For the complete report?
At least from my perspective, once we have the final report, we review it with Director Calla and the staff and receive their feedback and guidance as well. We'll then probably come back to the council with a full presentation on the results of at least the water audit portion of it.
Yeah, because there's a lot of information in here that, you know, for the layman, you know, digested a little bit and come back and maybe have some questions that, you know, maybe more clear to the viewing public. I mean, you did a great presentation, but it was a little over my head, as I'm sure that others feel the same way. You know, we wanted to get to the meat and bones as to, you know, where our loss is, where it's happening, if it's happening, if we're addressing it. And, you know, we're still waiting for that information when you get it, so thank you.
Yeah, we'll have a final technical memorandum, which will explain everything, which will forward ahead, allow you to read through it, and prior to any council meeting that we'd have with the presentation summary, allow you to ask questions based upon something that you've had a chance to read.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions?
Just to comment, Council President, Acting President, I just want everyone to, you know, keep in mind and be aware that our savings, our borrowing from MWRA is much exhausted through 2030. So I know, you know, when people look at reserves and say $600,000, well, that's one major water main break. But we can go through more than half of that. And without the ability to borrow from MWRA through 2030 because of our investment in the center project, there are systems in place that are, you know, expected to be going within the next three to four years. One of them has certainly been identified by the DPW director that, you know, estimating about $1 million in repair. So we, although we don't want to, we want to be responsible in what we charge, we also have to build reasonable reserves. And keep in mind that our borrowing from MWRA in certain programs is isolated out to 2030. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councillor Terry.
Thank you. Just another quick question. Obviously, our water loss is pretty substantial. We're at around 20%ish and and I think the state average must be somewhere around 10 or a little under. Do you guys, I mean, you mentioned how you've done water studies in other municipalities. Do you see that as a, as something completely out of the ordinary? Or is this something that you've seen before? And how have you addressed it before?
No, we've seen communities in this area of 20%. And there could be a multitude of different reasons behind it. Some are meters, some are source meters, some are just leak-detection programs, some are billing issues. So the purpose of the water audit is essentially a deep dive into all those issues that we just discussed. And at the end, it should be a clear picture on steps to take to start tackling and lowering the unaccounted-for water percent.
And have you seen water rates go down significantly after your studies?
We've seen the unaccounted-for water loss go down, correct? Whatever the conclusion is, if it's something larger that may take a capital project or money, that, you know, obviously that just takes time to fund and complete the work. If it's something about a complete modification to a billing or meter-reading program, that's another step. So it just depends on the timing of implementation of some of the results, and then the back and forth too with with Director Calla. And if it's something that they also believe in, that could be an issue, we're all in agreement before things are done.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I would like to thank the presenters for the presentation, and hopefully we will hear back from you soon on this, for our final report. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have no public hearings for this meeting, so the next item is public comments. So I will open it up to the public for public comments.
Mr. John Stanley first.
Hi, this is John Stanley from, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, from precinct, from Waveway, Precinct 6. This evening, about an hour and a half ago, a delivery truck came down Waveway dropping off the new trash bins to each house. To my house, which is three apartments, I live in one of them, they dropped off four barrels. I've attended various meetings. I haven't attended every meeting about this, but I've attended several of them. And several of you know that I have been there. And I've spoken to the fact that in my building, we put out one small barrel a week and a recycle bin every two weeks. There is no way on earth that I need four of those barrels. First of all, I don't have four apartments. I have no place to put those barrels, they don't fit. I also did my own survey in the neighborhood this morning, because I knew that this was coming up at this meeting, to ask people if they knew anything about this. Most people in this town have no idea what you're doing. You're dropping off barrels, you're talking about a trash fee that hasn't been determined yet. I've talked to my own councillor about this. I was told that the Zero Waste Committee would be getting back to me. First of all, the Zero Waste Committee is not, it isn't in charge of finances in the town. And secondly, they never got back to me anyway. And to tell you the truth, with this Zero Waste Committee, I could teach them a thing or two by putting out one small barrel for three apartments once a week and a recycle bin once every two weeks. I think I could give them a course on it. But I think dropping these barrels off without any announcements, without any established fee of what is But I think dropping these barrels off without any announcements, without any established fee of what it's going to be, is reprehensible. Now, I want to know who's gonna come and pick up these barrels. First of all, I don't need them. They're, right now, they're in the sidewalk. They're blocking the sidewalk. I need some answers to this. This is, this is, this, this has been communicated so badly by you people.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. I, is it, um? I don't know, Director Cala, maybe, do you have any insight into the process with the barrels as they're being distributed?
Yeah, uh, absolutely. Uh, thank you. Um, so capital waste is deploying the barrels. They actually have a, uh. A subcontractor deploying the barrels for them. Uh, I'm a little confused on the four barrels. Um, we don't have any, anybody on the roster that should be getting more than three barrels. Uh, as we're only going, uh, one, two, and three family homes and then condos. So, we are, um. We expect the deployment, you know, to, 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 to have. Locations that either need additional barrels or, or get too many barrels. Again, nobody should get four barrels. I will certainly check into that. Uh, DPW will certainly come and remove, uh, any excess barrels, but. I'll let the, the manager speak further on the, on the trash fee. Everybody is, uh, this program, everybody is gonna get a barrel. Every unit is, uh. Is gonna get a barrel. Every unit will get a trash fee. Uh, I don't know at this point, and I'll, 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 I'll let the manager and, and. The policymakers decide on, on abatements if they want, you know. Uh, have the allowance of no barrels with some sort of proof that they have their own trash, uh, pickup. But that's where we are right now. The, the deployment, uh, has started. It will, should be wrapped up by middle of next week. Every unit that, that we've identified as a, uh, as a, as a trash. Uh, a- a- as a, as a, as a residence unit that is, is on, under our current trash contract will be getting a barrel.
Is every, does my house count as one unit or three units?
Your house counts as three units. Uh, to three, it's a, if it's illegal, three families, it's three units, three trash bins.
Okay, th- this was supposed to be up for discussion. Evidently, it was discussed at some meeting that I wasn't at. Um, I think it's outrageous to be charging me or anybody else who's already. Already. Doing zero waste to be charging us an exorbitant fee for barrels that we simply don't need. I think it's reprehensible on all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley.
And I'm quite sure, I'm not the only one who's feeling this. I'm sure that other people are, are listening to this now and they'll be seeing their barrels dumped on. But I would do want somebody to at least come by and take one of these barrels away. Heavens. I mean, this is not a four-unit apartment building. Why would they even think it was?
Will certainly take the, the, the fourth barrel. I, I don't know why, did, uh, I can't answer the question. I'd have to look into it. Uh, again, no, no, no home in town should be getting more than three barrels.
Okay, well, well, for the record, I have four. So if you need an extra one, you're quite welcome to it.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, the next person for public comment?
Yes, next person is Carol Walker.
Hi, Carol.
Thank you. Um, as you may know, a batch of mature shade trees were removed. Recently, despite widespread opposition and many people wanting to know why they were removed. Um, we, uh, we only know, uh, that, uh. There was one homeowner who claimed a tree was threatening her retaining wall, which is a concrete. Slope holding up a line. And, and, and we know that June seventh is the date of a public hearing. It seems. That we'll get a reason for all the tree removal then, but the decision will already have been made. Because the Tree Committee has approved their removal. Now, that doesn't seem, uh, very fair without, I, you know, I live and breathe here. And trees are very important to give us healthy air and I, I respectfully request. That the town issue a moratorium on all tree removals. Until a public tree ordinance has been put in, in place, which could include residents. As well as tree experts.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, who's the next person? And for people who are calling in on their phone, you can just dial star six and that will. In- enact the raise your hand feature. And if you would like to do a public comment, you can just use the raise your hand feature to be recognized. Okay, uh, so I think the next person is Michaela Dalton.
Hey, yes, it's Michaela Dalton. I'm on Cottage Park Road, Precinct Five. I'm just, uh, raising my voice. I did send a letter to the council today, uh, so I don't know if you've seen it. Um, but I just wanted to verbally express my wish also that we put a moratorium. On tree felling, tree removal, just for the short term. Until we can get some better processes in place that include the community and are more transparent and responsive.
Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, I think we have Guy Hillman.
Actually, Joanne Hillman.
Hi, Joanne.
Hello, everyone. Uh, Joanne Hillman, One Sixteen Summit Precinct. No, yeah, five. So, uh, I'm just gonna echo what the previous two people said. So on behalf of myself and on a citizens group that's formed called Winthrop Likes Trees. Well, I also wrote into you earlier today. Regarding having a moratorium on any felling of trees. We lost six in the center last week and now there's four more slated. That's ten trees in a couple of weeks. Um, so we can put in place. An, an ordinance. The, the town really should have a tree ordinance. And we would like to be part of the process. We, some of us have been researching other towns and what they have in their ordinances. For instance, Boston has, um, they charge anyone requesting to fell a healthy tree. They charge three hundred dollars per one diameter inch. That might be a deterrent for people that, you know, may not. Uh, just wanna deal with whatever the tree is doing, like breaking leaves or whatever, uh, other issues they, that. I don't know, I, it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's high. That kind of rate, but you know, that's just one thing. But we just feel that. Uh, there needs to be more of a say in what is happening with the trees. Uh, there's many people concerned with, um, with what's happening. Uh, so that's all I have to say and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Joanne. Uh, next we have Diana Vines.
Hey, everyone. Um, this is Diana and I just wanna echo what Carol and Michaela and Joanne have already said, but I al- I also wrote in today. Um, just, just to summarize, it, it's definitely become very clear that we are in dire need of. Uh, reorg when it comes to, uh, supporting our tree population and with respect to the ordinance. Uh, Cambridge passed a similar temporary protection ordinance on trees of eight inches or more. When. O- on private land. You guys still hear me? Yeah. Um, when, when it became abundantly clear that their tree canopy was in danger, in fact, um, to look. At that time to them, that eighteen percent of their tree, tree canopy had disappeared over the last decade. Um, and if you look around here in Winthrop, you'll see that we've, we've got more and more stumps kind of accumulating, but. The good news is that the real work and discussions, which to be blunt, should have been happening all along. Through funds appropriated from individuals and the committee and employee in charge of safekeeping our town assets. Um, has failed to do, is, is actually happening now. You know, as Joanne mentioned, we have this very la- large community. People have come out in droves because they're watching this happen literally before their eyes. Um, more so in the next two weeks, or sorry, uh, month or so in a very dramatic fashion than. That may have even happened previously. Um, but they're taking time out of their workday and their family time and weekends to come up with a way to develop replanting plans. For, for those areas hardest hit by the demos that have been happening over the last two decades or so. While trying to kind of hold back this flood of, of mature tree removals. Winthrop has actually so far surpassed the damage that Cambridge was experiencing when they put something similar in place. And a- as several folks have just mentioned, on Monday, our tree ward announced it entertain. A hearing for the removal of a, a hundred plus year old oak tree. Which measures, I measured it. I literally went and measured it. It's thirty-one inches across. Um, and it's, it's resulting from a citizen citing private ADA laws, which. Really applied to commercial spaces. Um, but clearly the situation's gotten out of control and needs. Needs some real analysis and consideration. So, there's no urgent issue in front of the Tree Committee requiring an, uh, immediate resolution. If there was a safety issue, it would actually be an exception to, uh, uh, a, an ordinance like this, but. You know, as an aside, as an aside. You know, this, this is, this is absolutely sort of a primary factor that needs to. Needs to be at the forefront of, of what we're looking to, to resolve. In this meeting, and I know it wasn't on the agenda, so I appreciate.
I think we lost you.
Yes, I wasn't sure if that was my computer or hers. Uh, Diana, I think we lost you there for a second. Um, sounded like you were wrapping up anyway. Um, you're still unmuted, but if not, we're just gonna move on. Okay, so, um, so the next person we have is Julia Wallace.
Hi, guys. Um, sorry that I'm not sure if Diana was finished, but I'll keep this short and sweet. Just really wanna echo everything that Diana and Michaela. And Todd, Joanne said, and then others about just putting the brakes on for a second, taking a breath and realizing that we might not have a process in place to guarantee. You know, the public benefits that we all gain by having, uh, you know, healthy shade street, shade trees and a process to ensure that they stay in place and. We've got such resources here just in the community as well as the Wynton Foundation to. Really put something in place that guarantees that process that's transparent. And that protects public safety at the same time. So I know we're really running short on time for this next round of tree removals. Which will almost certainly be approved on Monday. So if there's anything you can do. To stop that or rather postpone it, I would really encourage you to do that. And I know that, uh, a lot of people in town would as well, and it's really to all of our benefits. So. Thanks so much. I know it wasn't on the agenda. Appreciate you, uh, considering our comments.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Steve Dalton.
Hey, guys. Um, guess what? This has nothing to do with the library. I, uh, I'm calling to, uh, voice my support also for the, uh, the tree issue. It just makes sense that when something happens in the town, it should happen according to, um, a set of procedures. And public input and a set of expertise that just doesn't seem to be present in the way that things are, and things are happening right now. Um, obviously, trees are something that affect us all, that, you know, um, provide. Shade and healthy air for the community. And I think that that's why it's really wise, the right decision, um, to have a, a better process in place. So I'm, I'm also expressing my support for a moratorium on cutting down trees. You know, not because I, I don't think that it's ever warranted to remove a tree, you know, that you, sometimes you, you do have to, but. It's, it's just that it's being done under circumstances that make it seem almost like. You know, uh, we, we could just, we could be looking a lot harder and a lot better. At making these decisions and, you know, it just makes sense. To get a better process in place, get somebody with relevant expertise. Who can say for sure that, you know, okay, well, yeah, this tree does need to go, or no, this tree can stay and here's how we can mitigate, you know, these. You know, potentially annoying effects it's having on neighbors, because there are, there are solutions other than just getting rid of trees and, uh. You know, I like stepping outside my house and having leaves surround me. I think that that's, that's pretty nice. And I think that everybody here can agree about that. So. Hopefully, we can find a solution that, uh, that works a little better than what we're doing right now.
Great, thank you, Steve. Um, and like I think was brought up by a couple of different people, this isn't on the agenda tonight. Um, so we can't really take quick, quick action, uh, like was requested by many people, but what I can commit to is to reviewing. The current process for which tree removals, um, are taking place in the town. And if, if we determine. That, uh, we can do it a better way, um, you know, we will do what we can to try to enact that. I can commit to doing that. So, thank everybody for those comments. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? If not, we will move on. Um, to correspondence. I know we received a ton of correspondence on, uh, the, the tree process. Um, and the moratorium, just like we received a lot of public comment. Uh, tonight, uh, Denise, did we receive any other public comment, uh, or emails or correspondences?
Um, we did receive most of them. All I received was on the tree moratorium. And we just talked to several people, but I can read the rest of the people that sent in their information. Was Anna Marie Holsbach, Denise Mahoney, Todd McKay, Nicole Powers, Jeanette Roy, Joseph Aiello. Sandra and Jamie Rusty, Allison Duer, Christopher Zeig, Alyssa Gamble, Kristen Gilzian. Laura Van Lennon, Deborah Keegan, Joyce Murphy. And we heard from Diana and Michaela. And Julia and Joanne. So we're good.
Thank you, Denise, and thank you to everybody for the correspondence. Um, next we'll move on to committee reports. The first committee is the Finance Commission. Counselor Leteri. Muted, Jim. Jim.
Thank you. The, this is more the Finance Committee, but I think it's written as Finance Commission, but the Finance Commission. Has met several times since our last meeting and continue to do so this week. Uh, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday evening. Um, our goal is to have a, a recommendation to the council. By email by Tuesday of next week and we'll give the counselors a chance to. Um, digest our recommendations over a week and then we will be voting on the budget at our next council meeting on the fifteenth. Um, I do wanna thank the, the councils that have attended some of the meetings to get a step up on the budget in the process. So that's that in the Finance Commission. And the Finance Committee met earlier this evening. There were three items on the agenda. Um, the first was unpaid bills of a prior year. Uh, this. The motion was to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year to be paid from current year departmental budgets as noted below. Um, and this was six hundred and seventy-five dollars from a, a box and rec invoice, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars from MIS and. Five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and change from the ferry. The total amount was fifteen hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents. This again is, is normal for this time of year. Um, you know, we'll get calls in, making sure that an invoice was paid. And we just wanna clean everything up before the end of this calendar year, uh, this fiscal year. So this motion did have a unanimous positive recommendation to move forward, which will take up an old business. The second motion was. To transfer seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy cents. From the Insurance Recovery Recreation Fund. To General Fund Special Article, the Ingleside Park Playground Repairs. This is more of an accounting and procedural motion when we received, um, a reimbursement or when we received. Funds from the insurance company on the claim, which were the seventy-two thousand, four fifty-six seventy. Um, they went into an insurance recovery recreation fund. That has to be transferred out of that fund to the special article. For the playground equipment, which is where we will pay the contract out of. So this is strictly procedural. Uh, we had discussed this at our pri- at our previous council meeting. Uh, we also did have unanimous positive recommendation on this and this will be coming. Um, also up in old business. The third motion was a motion that the ca- town council vote. To accept into the town donation fund. A donation in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Collected by Seth Williams and subsequently transfer and appropriate to the General Fund Special Article. Ingleside Park Playground Repairs or take any other action relative there too. This also was discussed, this is. You know, resident Seth Williams did an incredibly kind gesture by raising, um, twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. And we, um, accept it. With, uh, with our thanks and gratitude. It was a extremely kind thing to do and we really appreciate the act. And this, again, any donation has to go into. And this, again, any donation has to go into. Has to go into the town donation fund, and then we will subsequently transfer it to. The Ingleside Park Playground Repair. So it's kinda like two motions in one. This also came out of committee with positive, um, unanimous recommendation. And again, a sincere thank you to Seth Williams. And that is it, Council Vice President.
Great, thank you, counselor. Uh, the next committee report is the Millerfield.
Millerfield has not met since our last meeting. Um, we just continue to watch the, the work done on the tennis courts and. Playground and, um, tennis courts and sidewalks. We're also, they did have bid openings. Uh, last week for the dog park and, uh, golf shed, which, um. We are looking over now, they came in a little higher than expected, so we will, um. You know, we're gonna have to meet on that and decide what to do going forward. If we wanna put it back out for another bid, or if we wanna go forward, uh, and try to, um. Try to, uh, come up with the additional funds, but we will be having a Millerfield meeting prior to our next meeting, so we will have another updated report on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, now the Committee on Rules and Ordinances, Counselor Rogiro.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, the Rules and Ordinances Committee met twice since our last council meeting. Uh, once on the twenty seventh of May, and then again just this afternoon. At both meetings, the committee discussed the old middle school zoning recommendation from the planning board. And, uh, solicited public feedback at both meetings as well. At this point, the committee is still awaiting a legal opinion from the town's attorney, Copa Minimage. On the zoning language itself, as discussed in the past, the committee feels that. It's most prudent to dot its i's and cross its t's with K and P prior to presenting a final motion to the full council. The committee also reviewed earlier this afternoon, the solid waste enterprise fund motion. Uh, this motion was passed unanimously and more will come in old business, but. In order to set up the enterprise fund, the council need to. Um, abide by mass general law and take a vote on establishing the fund, which is, um, what this motion would accomplish.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, uh, no more committee reports on the agenda. We'll go to the town manager's report. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, uh, Acting President. Um, certainly I'll start with the dog park and the golf club shed. Um, certainly the, with opening the bids and seeing the, the lowest bidder. Was about a hundred and twenty five thousand more than what we have budgeted for. Um, Councilor Terry did mention, uh, and I would ask, and I was gonna ask her in this, um. My report that the Millerfields Committee take another look, uh, to see what available funds that they possibly could, um. Could muster together to help us with this deficit and, and maybe reexamine. The SBA, um, side of things and if they could free up any money from what was transferred. From the SBA to the, uh, to the tennis courts and maybe, uh, finding some money. I mean. At this point, we have to sharpen our pencils, we have to look for more money. Um, and, you know, without trying to go to a reserve or stabilization account, I know, um. You know, once the foundation has contributed, um, you know, the Millerfields Committee has contributed to this. Um, and you know, some of this is owed, and I hate that, uh, we have advertised and gone out and committed to the shed. And this dog park, and now to change it and strip it down to rebid it, um, is, is. Is a pri- is problematic in, in our communications. And certainly will be looked at, uh, in a disappointing fashion to the people that we've made these commitments to. So, um, I think we have to do our best to shopping our pencils and see where, what else we can come up with. Um, to get this project done and get it moving, uh, most importantly. Ingleside Park, I'll move too quickly, uh, demolition should start tomorrow. You'll start to see, um, companies in there removing. Um, the play equipment. I talked to Sean Driscoll just a little while ago, who said to me, uh, they should be there tomorrow. So it's great, that's great news. Um, Parks and Recs will start with three concerts, um, starting on July eighth. When they usually do five, they're gonna do three this summer. Summer program is up on their website. We encourage anyone that needs summer. Um, childcare, uh, to, to enroll in his programs. Uh, his, he's an enterprise account, so his programs count on people's enrollments. And the fees are generated from those, those enrollments. Summer job program, we're still waiting for funding from Massport and the summer jobs program. Um, they have communicated with Sean several times. We feel that we will have that funding. Um, and we should have an answer by the end of this week, so, um, that's great news as well, and hopefully. Uh, they keep it at prior levels, uh, now that they see the travelers are coming back. And the airport's bustling, especially over Memorial Day weekend. Um, beaches and beach monitors will be implemented pending on funding from Massport on July eighth for the Arrow Beach. Uh, moving to trash, um, as we heard, uh, you know, some people are very upset and rightfully so. Um, I feel, um, certainly the unexpected delivery that happened today was not. Um, certainly anticipated or communicated to me or Director Cala. Uh, the staging, it was supposed to have them shipped and staged and went through. Assembled and then shipped out from the staging location. That, that didn't happen. I apologize for that. Um, and certainly I would have never just dropped barrels on people's doorsteps. I think that's, you know, very poor move. Um, we ha- we have to deal with it, and now that they're there, we want to encourage people to use those barrels. Uh, myself and Director Cala will be meeting with the Zero Waste Committee. On, uh, educational materials moving forward, timelines and what they can expect. Um, and it's certainly the council, and it will come up later tonight. Um, there's policy decisions to be made by the council along the way here. We've made the first steps of the hundred and sixty dollar fee. Um, you know, the council can, you know, might have to consider. Um, what about if, if I fill my barrel? So how am I gonna dispose of that trash? Initially, uh, we have it set up that we will pick up the trash and monitor the tipping fees. Um, but again, those are policy decisions that I can't implement without guidance and authority from the council. Uh, so what I am implementing is the one hundred and sixty dollar fee. Uh, and when I'm guaranteeing people, we encouraging you to use those barrels, but we're gonna pick up your trash. And we're gonna monitor those, those tipping costs and see if they're outrageously high over last year's tipping cost, or are they lower? And then I think, you know, along the way here, the council has to make a decision whether or not, um, the excess outside that one barrel per unit. Um, are we gonna have bags? Are we gonna have stickers? Uh, what type of stuff? So I was on the phone with Tracy, um, Melapage earlier. Um, not, yes, excuse me, not Tracy, looking at Tracy, oh, Wendy Melapage, and. I, I said, uh, Tracy, so excuse me, uh, earlier tonight, and you know, we're gonna meet with, with her, and then she'll can bring this. Back to her committee, come up with ideas on communication, best practices. Uh, and certainly, you know, we'll, we'll consider anyone's input or comments. Um, so I, I. Feel free to comment on that. Um, but again, our goal is to reduce the tonnages and reduce the costs. Not to increase a fee. Um, so over the next year, we'll have educational materials and how we can do that as a community. Um, and certainly how people can hopefully help us get those, those fees down in a downward direction. And that's whether or not, you know, they consider recycling food and getting it out of our trash, which is about forty percent of our weight in our trash. Uh, is, is food waste. So, um, certainly we, we'd like to look at over the next year. Um, if you have that food recycling contract, you get a discount on your, on your rate. So. Uh, you know, give us time, I, you know, apologize again for people's. Opening the door, looking out their window and seeing a barrel. It should have never happened that way, but again. Uh, I find myself in the position, it did happen that way, so we have to manage our way through it. Uh, we have to apologize to the people and, and guarantee them, there will be timelines and education material, materials coming. Uh, from the zero waste people, from the town manager's office and the DBW director, um, as well. So, um, thank you for your patience with that one. Uh, explanation. So ferry, um, trying to get it up and running for next Monday. Um, your staffing is, is an issue. A lot of the captains, uh, that are out there. Are not coming back to work and there's no excess captain. So we're trying to work Monday to Friday schedule first, then the weekend schedule second. We have posted, um, our friends in Quincy have also gathered up another captain for us. Um, and we're looking at processes that we need to have in place and how people are tested to be a captain for a ferry. Um, and certainly assuring public safety is, is met during the ferry. Um, and also making sure that if we have alcohol on board, that we have a license. Denise is gonna help us with that with the ABCC. Who's the only one that can issue a license for a ferry, uh, uh, commercial boat, the town of Winthrop, the licensing commission Winthrop cannot. Um, I, I just wanna bring up council meeting locations. Um, I, you know, if there's a desire, I just need a heads up, um, if we're gonna go and return to in-person meetings. And where do you wanna have those meetings? Um, you know, I, the, the Harvey Room is a smaller room. Um, initially I'm hoping and encouraging the council to think of maybe the senior center as we open the meetings up. There's, you can distance much, uh, the easier, but I still need time to get cameras down there. Um, to get, uh, widescreen TVs in place, uh, so you can see your zoom, if people wanna still zoom in. Um, so I, I'm just, uh, I wanna be encouraging of the council if they, if, if they're anticipating that, but please give me enough time. Uh, to orchestrate that. And that's all I have. Thank you, um, Mr. President.
Great, thank you, Mr. Manager. Are there any questions to the town manager? Councilwoman?
Sure, um, just my two cents. Um, I think because we've had such an amazing turnout with our, um, council meetings during the pandemic. I'm hoping that, that it continues, uh, maybe in person or at least in Zoom, and I, I would suggest that maybe we might need the senior center to see. How big the crowd gets, um, that the Harvey Room is very small. Just my two cents.
Thank you. I'll wait for the direction from a, from the full council and just, um. You know, the trees, uh, I just wanna touch base quickly on the trees. I know Tracy, um, has sent her sentiments to me on trees. As well, and I heard the people tonight, I don't wanna think I'm ignoring them, I'm not. Uh, I love shades, you know, um. My light skin in the summer does not, uh, mix well. So, um, we're all for trees. As the center project had those trees to be removed from the implementation and the vote of the center project. Those trees were removed, there were public hearings on that project, um, you, you know, three or four years ago. Um, so, you know, some of those trees will be, um, replaced. And my understanding from talking to Paula Donald, that the trees that were taken down, I think there was three in the center, Steve, three or four. There'll be double the amount of trees, um, going back into the center. So, uh, I just want to assure the public, you know, we hear the sentiments, and we're sensitive to the, to the trees and, uh, and certainly. We're, we're gonna do our best to replace any tree we take down.
There was six, uh, taken down in the center, but again, they were part of the initial, uh. Landscape architecture, part of the, the plans that were submitted and voted on by the council, so. Uh, those six trees will certainly be replaced, and additional trees, uh, are also, uh, being installed in the project as well.
Thank you. Council Flockhart?
Uh, Town Manager. What is the, uh, percentage of vaccinated in Winthrop?
Um, last I heard, I think we were hovering around fifty percent of vaccinated in Winthrop. I will have to check with, um. The Public Health Director to get an accurate, a more accurate number. Um, so I, I, I can't specifically say a counselor. Um, you know, but you're bringing up a good point, and people who don't feel like, um, still participating in full council hearings. Um, they should be a remote option. Uh, but in order to do that, uh, since the governor has, um. Revoked his emergency orders, has submitted, uh, legislation. So to keep things on remote, we, I think we have to defer back to pre-COVID times. And the, the council could actually implement, um, their own, uh, motion. And acceptance of allowing certain members of the council, or any board for that matter, uh, to remote participation. Uh, as long as the quorum was met in the actual physical place of the meeting. So I would encourage the council to also, as they're thinking, uh, or if they're not thinking, that's fine too. If they're thinking about remote participation, that we just cover and make sure we have that covered with a motion to accept, uh, remote participation.
Okay, uh.
Would the, uh. Go ahead, Peter.
I, you know, I didn't know you had a follow-up.
Um, well, my follow-up is a second question. Uh, if we move to the senior center. Do we have the ability to bring counselors and participants or, you know, um, attendees, whatever they're called. To participate zip by Zoom?
We would make sure prior to, uh, holding any meeting, um, I would need, you know, some lead time on this. Uh, you know, I, I'd say good week, we'd have to move video cameras down there. We would move a, a widescreen whiteboard with a projector. Uh, for the Zoom people that wanted to zoom in and participate, and also have microphones attached to that. So. Uh, you know, it's some work, um, it's, it's not work that we can't get accomplished.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Torino.
Yes, uh, thank you, um, Council Vice President, uh, Chief, uh, and Acting Town Manager. Um, I know we hastily put this program in place for the trash fees and the collection and. But during some of the discussion, uh, there was talking about removing the existing trash cans from people's homes. I know this happened real fast. Um, and we were assured at one point from our, our, uh, uh. Town Manager Austin Faison, that that would be, um, a no-brainer and that the town or whoever. Capital would remove those waste barrels from there. So, you know, you may wanna communicate that to capital. That, uh, if people put out their barrels and they were empty, that they would remove them from the street.
That, that was my understanding. Director Cala had his hand, so I, I will defer to him.
Yeah, I did have a conversation with, uh, uh, both Mr. Marullo and Mr. Recupero from Capital Waste. And they are certainly committed to that, and they will certainly take any trash barrels or bins that, uh, homeowners wanna get rid of. They won't do it, uh, with the normal trash pickup, though what they'll do is they'll, they'll advertise it. And they'll do like they do with the cruise fees or, uh, curbside pickup. They'll send a different truck in. And, uh, and, and do one or two days of, of trash bin removal.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Rogiro.
Uh, thank you, Council Vice President. Um, just real quickly, um, a few others. Already, uh, mentioned this point, but I, I just wanted to also advocate that I do think it's very important that we do have a Zoom. Well, maybe not Zoom, but a remote option, um, especially for folks from the public to call in. Um, especially if they don't feel comfortable coming in to give public comment. Um, I do think that, you know, participation has increased, at least in my, uh, short amount of time on the council. But even, uh, prior to, to being on this board, just, um, from following along. Um, as a member of the public, I do think it's important that we continue to have this. So, um, you know, I know that, uh. There's a desire to go back in person to some extent, but, um, I think that some good things came out of this past year. Maybe a little bit of a silver lining here is that, um, we have been able to use technology in a way that we haven't before. So. Um, just wanna advocate for that. Thank you.
Counselor Damaco?
Yeah, uh, same, same point as Counselor Honan and Counsel, Counselor Rogiro. I think we actually already passed a motion. To ensure that we would have Zoom participation, uh, from the public. And I mean, I think. The end of the day, it's the best of both worlds. If we can have people in person and people who can't be in person go in on Zoom, I, I think that's a win-win for everybody. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Yes, Council Flockhart.
Um, thank you, Council Vice President. Uh, am I to understand that these trash barrels that were dropped off today. Are alongside the old trash barrels, which will not be picked up for some time? Uh, I think Mr. Stanley raised the issue that he doesn't have room for all of these. It sounds like everybody's gonna have this problem if they have both new barrels and old barrels.
Yep, I.
I'll yield to Steve Cala on that.
Yeah, so, so the, these are a replacement barrel, Counselor. The, the, these are, uh, what, what's out? What was, the town has deployed, uh, many years ago was a recycling bin. These are now a trash bin, uh, they, they, they look identical, but they, they have a blue cover instead of a yellow cover. It's these blue bins that we're hoping, uh, to, to kinda. Convert to over time, and what you would be getting rid of is any, any. Regular barrels, old trash barrels that you may wanna get rid of. Nothing. That has been delivered by Capital Waste. Those aren't, would, would be taken away. So you, you will now have a trash bin and a recycle bin for every unit. And then any excess overflow right now, you would put in your own personal barrel until the, uh. The, the policymakers decide how that will be dealt with. But as the, uh, Acting Town Manager spoke to earlier, we will continue to ta- pick up your trash. Uh, there's not gonna, you know, there's. Uh, there's not gonna, you know, there's there's we're not. Um, putting restrictions on 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 any more restrictions than have already been. So if our if our restrictions before was every unit could put out three barrels. We're asking you now to utilize the the new town barrel that that you were given and then an additional barrel. Or two if needed, uh hopefully not, but and it's it's any old barrels that you want to get rid of. Uh, when when Capitol schedules this this curbside pickup is what you would be getting rid of. Again, not not the recycle bin or the trash bin, old barrels.
Thank you.
Steve, just, uh, I think I I Counsel Flockhart mentioned Mr. Stanley. I want to assure her as well. Uh, that the fourth barrel that was dropped off will be retrieved by DPW tomorrow and removed from Mr. Stanley's house.
Absolutely will be, yes. And we're keeping a database. Uh, we've gotten several calls today of uh people that. Uh, ha- either um mostly that didn't get enough barrels. You know, we have a list, uh again, that we've uh we've generated by following the trash truck and and uh. And we've aligned it with the assessors' map. Uh, I'm sorry, the assessors' list. On uh on on their their coded list of multi-families, so. Um, we have a roster of what we expect each each uh resident to get at this point. But evidently, our roster uh is, you know, i- in some of our cases today showed two families. But they were actually three families. So I also have to follow up with the building department to make sure that they were legally converted from a two-family to a three-family. But we certainly want to make sure that we bill appropriately and uh and we want to make sure we we bill for that third bin. So it's kind of a a a dynamic list, but um. Uh, you know, it's a good list and we'll continue to to work on on through the deployment.
Thank you. Counsel Oteary?
Uh, thanks. And I think I think just to piggyback on Counsel Flockhart's thought was, I think also what. Um, she was trying to 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 show is that, you know. This kind of took us by surprise, I know, and and from the sound of it, it took the DPW director and the interim town manager by surprise too that. Uh, you know, we thought that they were going to be distributed in a different way, but I think. Uh, Counsel Flockhart's thought too is like Mr. Stanley said, that there's just not enough. You know, if people have two or three barrels of their own that they've been putting out and now they have an additional barrel. Now they have to, now they now there's four barrels they have to put somewhere for the week along with their recycle bin. A lot of people just don't have the space to store all these barrels. So I guess two-part here is, first of all, you know, I wish Capitol was a little more fluid with their communication with us. In terms of how they were rolling this out. And secondly, since they did roll this out, not on their own, I mean, we all knew they were coming. We just didn't know they were coming today. Um, are they using the same drop-off sheet that we that we calculated or are they just going by who they draw? You know what I mean? I mean, at some point, we have to collate who's getting the bins and who's getting a a fee. And I I just hope that they're going by the same list that we um that we secured to make sure that it's. Collating the same way. And I know D- Director Call had just said that they're. You know, we've he's he's received a few phone calls of people that didn't get enough or whatever, vice versa, but. Um, we kind of have to make sure we know exactly how many barrels were distributed each day if they're gonna be doing this this week. So, uh, you know, it, we just don't want this to get away from us.
So i- if you don't mind, I I just quickly to that. So each barrel has a serial number?
Yep.
And a chip. So at the end of deployment, we're gonna receive from Capital Waste serial numbers. Uh, to every address. So every address is gonna have a serial number or or up to three serial numbers, depending on the on the type of property. Um, yeah, again, prior to billing, we 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 will. Undoubtedly need to make some adjustments. We'll need to add a add barrels to certain locations and remove. Uh, so that when we do do the the uh annual billing, when that time arrives. We will make sure that we're billing appropriately for the bins that were deployed.
Thank you. Counsel Farino?
Yeah, uh, thank you. I just want to encourage everybody to attend those. Waste management or the uh uh, you know, the meetings that are gonna be coming up because they are gonna be discussing. Future plans to have Asia throw bags and there'll be a cost affixed to those. And so this is gonna be a process. That is gonna take a little while, but it's gonna be implemented and people need to pay attention to what's going on. Wasn't much participation in some of the other meetings that were going on. And I encourage you to really uh attend those meetings and voice your opinion of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any further questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Uh, the first item on old business is the Winter Middle School zoning. Counselor Ruggiero?
Uh, thank you, Council Vice President. Um, as mentioned earlier. Um, in the committee report, um, there will be no motion coming forward tonight regarding this. Um, as we're still waiting legal advice from KMP um before coming forth with a formal motion. Um, I anticipate that we will have this by our next meeting. Um, and so I'm also anticipating that rules and ordinances will meet at least one more time before our next meeting.
Yep, it looks like it will be a full meeting. Um, so we might have to have a shield. Um, okay, so we will move on to the next uh item, uh the Ordinance Review Committee recommendations. Counselor Ruggiero?
Yep, um, we ta- sort of tabled, well, not officially tabled, but um not too much new information to report on this. Um, as we spoke about last time, the Ordinance Review Committee uh put together a set of recommendations. The Rules and Ordinances Committee. Um, took a look at them and accepted uh most of them. However, the Ordinance Review Committee has. Uh, requested to continue its work moving in throughout the rest of the year, so um. The Rules and Orders Committee will be holding this recommendation until the Ordinance Review Committee is completely done. Um, with its review because there will be some charter changes. That uh may be required that need to go up for a a vote to the entire community, so. Uh, nothing further on that right now.
Okay, great. Um, Counsel Honan?
I'd like to, um, I I think they should, the ordinance committee uh should make a recommendation to adopt a public tree ordinance, something that we don't have yet, but. Should, and you know, based on the feedback from the community tonight and in correspondence this week, I think it's something important that's needed.
Yep, I agree with you. Um, so I'm going to send that. Recommendation from you to the Rules and Ordinances Committee and it will be something that we take up um before the next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Great. Uh, any further uh discussion on the Ordinance Review Committee recommendations? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to the next item. Town Council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year in the amount. Of one thousand five hundred and seventy and seventy-eight cents. Counselor Letery?
You're muted.
All right, thank you, Council Vice President. We have three motions that we will take in succession here. The first is that I move the Town Council vote to authorize unpaid bills of a prior year. In the amount of one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-eight cents. Be paid from current year departmental budgets as noted. Or take any other action relative there too. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation does not need a second.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any discussion on the motion? Oh, it doesn't need a second. It's coming out of committee. Seeing no discussion, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory? Thank you.
Okay. Second motion, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer seventy-two thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy cents. For the Insurance Recovery Recreation Fund to General Fund Special Article Fiscal Year Twenty-One Ingleside Park Playground Repairs. Or take any other action relative there too. This also came out of committee with positive recommendation does not need a second.
Okay, is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory? Thank you.
And we do have one-third motion that the Town Council vote to accept into the Town Donation Fund. A donation in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Collected by Seth Williams and subsequently transfer inappropriately to the General Fund Special Article. Ingleside Park Fiscal Year Twenty-One Ingleside Park Playground Repairs or take any other action relative there too. This also came out of committee with positive recommendation does not need a second. And again, thank you very much to Seth Williams.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes, thank you, Steph.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Counsel Frino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'd also like to thank Seth Williams for that very generous donation. Um, the next item on the agenda is the Trash Fee Enterprise Fund. Counselor Ruggiero?
Yes, thank you. So, um, as mentioned, the Rules and Ordinance Committee met uh just this afternoon to um. To uh make this motion. This is the establishment of the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Uh, the text of the motion is as follows. I move that the Town Council vote to accept provisions of Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-three F and one-half. Of the Massachusetts General Laws establishing the quote Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. As an enterprise fund effective fiscal year twenty-twenty-two or take any other action there too. Uh, this passed unanimously out of committee and I do not believe it needs a second.
Okay, uh, is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Okay, uh, Counsel Farino?
Yes, uh, thank you. And as I mentioned in the last meeting when we discussed this. I wanted to make sure that the money that is earmarked from trap for trash removal in the budget. Goes directly into the enterprise fund. Um, no deviation, no uh taking money out of that to uh balance any other budget. But that's to go right into directly to the uh Enterprise Fund of Trash Removal. There's already been discussion about using uh money out of that uh. Line item to offset some budget deficits of uh next year. And I think it's wrong and I think it should be earmarked to that uh enterprise fund. Completely. Thank you.
Hmm, and uh Counsel Oteary, correct me if I'm wrong, that is the what has been proposed to happen for the next year's budget, correct?
Yeah, there's different things still being discussed in the Finance Commission. Whatever comes out of the Finance Commission will be discussed amongst the councilors and. Ultimately, the council has a final vote as to how everything is appropriate.
Yeah. Great. Okay, uh, so. Is there um any further debate or comment on this motion? Seeing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Flockhart?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Oteary?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Counsel Frino?
No.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel President Boncory? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. Uh, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget. I will send that to the uh the Finance Committee.
Uh, Counsel Vice President? That's that's really just on the agenda so we could bring it up this evening. We want to make sure that. Uh, by the rules of the charter, the the if the council does not act on this in our next meeting. The town manager's budget recommendation automatically takes effect. So this is just more a um, an item, so it is on the agenda now, so it won't be the first time brought up when we go to vote on it. Uh, on the fifteen.
Thank you for that clarification. Uh, so, uh, any further uh discussion about this? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on sending this to the uh Finance Committee. Do we not need, I can just do that?
We know it's already in the Finance Committee, uh Finance Commission.
So, um, okay, great. So that I will send that to the Finance Committee. The next item is Town Manager Legal Services replenishment. I will send that to the Finance Committee as well. And I I have the authority to do that, correct?
Yep, yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, library surplus items. I will also send that to the Finance Committee. Um, ordinance uh re- ordinance parking, uh, so parking on Ocean View Street. I'm going to send that to the Committee on Rules and Ordinances. And the Town Council to vote to transfer thirty-two hundred dollars from Town Council Reserve to the Veterans Agent Account. I'm going to send that to the Finance Committee as well. Okay, um, is there any comment on any of those items? I didn't check. Um, seeing none, we will move into public comment. Um. Is there anybody from the public who has any uh public comment tonight? You can just use the raise your hand function on Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can just dial uh star six. We have Diana Vines.
Hey, everyone. Um, so a couple of things. Uh, so thank you, Counsel Honan, for raising the ordinance. That's great news. It's gonna get on the agenda for the next committee meeting and thank you to Town Manager Delahante for recognizing that the. The CBD tree removals were relatively traumatic for for lots of folks, but I I will. Just point out, and maybe this is more of a question, that that incident was absolutely a tipping point. Not a catalyst for this outpouring of support. I think if you look around, you'll see. A pattern of this happening and and I'm left wondering now if if the removal of those trees was actually preordained. In in advance of the hearing that was um highly uh attended. And 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 where several members of our public objected to those removals. What what is our best next step? In in light of the fact that we're we're looking to the next town council meeting to hear about the ordinance, what is it? What is our. Appropriate course of action with respect to the hearing that's now being held on this giant oak tree? And and three other trees. I visited all of them, but this one, this one is is a major, major deal. What what? What's, how how do we object in in the event that um that this committee votes to remove those trees?
So I, the process that's in place is is that there needs to be a hearing at the Tree Committee. Um. You know, I think we can all express our objections um as counselors individually. I think that that's in bounds. Um, and I think certainly as individuals, if if that's something that we'd like to do. Um, but that's how what I understand the process to be is is that the Tree Committee does have a lot of uh. A lot of discretion in whether in in this process. Um, I don't know, it, Steve, is there any other? Um, is there any other alternatives that we have besides that or is that the last?
Oh, yeah, so the the Tree Committee um is following state law to to have a a hearing for any public shade tree. Uh, that that for removal. Uh, the Tree Warden does have um. Discretion to to remove a dead and dangerous tree without a tree hearing, that that's not what's going on. Uh, in these instances, that these are, these are herrings. They have been placed on the on the herring agenda for. Could be a multitude of reasons why these different trees get on. Um, and they'll be heard by the Tree Committee and. The Tree Committee will make a vote and I don't know of 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 any other action. That that, you know, can be taken, uh, you you know, I I don't. I'd have to look into the the Town Charter. I don't think the Town Charter really addresses it. It's state law that really dictates the 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 hearing process.
Thank you.
Then Counsel, uh, Mr. President, just, uh, you know, I think at that point it would be an injunction uh in Superior Court, so um to stop the actions of the town. Uh, again, I'm not giving legal advice. I think that's the, that's the, I'll check on the process and make sure people are informed of the process with KMP. Um, that's always uh an avenue anyone can go to stop government from acting. Uh, and it's, of course, it's in the injunction will be weighed by a judge and determined whether or not our actions. Our actions are creating irreparable harm or not.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have Joanne Hillman, I think. It's still Joanne, right?
Yes, still Joanne. Hi, thanks. Uh, I, my question is on how we get placed on the agenda? Can I do that here? Can I request that this issue of a tree moratorium and? Just further discussion about our tree canopy generally, um. Gets placed on the next committee meeting, uh, agenda.
Yeah, so, um. Counselor Honan's motion that she made earlier in the meeting is, uh, was sent to the rules and ordinances committee. Um, we'll be taking it up at, uh, uh, I don't have all the members' schedules in front of me right now, but I'm, we will be having a meeting on it. Um, and I would, I would just encourage people who would like to, um. Who would like to have their voice heard in this to come with some tangible suggestions about what a, a local tree ordinance might be. The process as I understand it right now is very, uh, state driven, uh, the, the. The different boards and the, the wardens are given their authority through the state, uh, and not necessarily through the local government. Um, if there's something that a local government can do that would, uh. It, you know, enhance this process in any way, I would encourage people to bring that, um, to the table. Um, some of the things that I was sent earlier today, I think were tackling private trees and other, uh. You know, trees, uh, that, the tree ordinances from other towns that weren't necessarily dealing with trees in the public way. Um, so I would, I would really like to sort of dig in on that. Um, and, and you know, and then at that point, it's really at the behest of the council, but. Um, that's, that's sort of the, the process that I envision having.
So that's, um, that addresses the ordinance and, you know, what language should be included. But my further question was about a moratorium. Is that also going to be looked at by the? Uh, ordinance review committee, or is that something that the town council should hear from generally, just, uh?
Yes, so the, the, the ordinance, the rules and ordinances committee is a subcommittee of the to, the whole town council. So. If we were to take up something like that, um. Then it would event, the end goal would eventually be to get it to go to the town council meeting. Um, so that the full council would, uh, be able to act on it. Uh, so, you know, I think that. We, we really need to do a lot of research on what a quote unquote moratorium would look like, whether or not we're, we're trying to do that. Or if we're trying to really enhance the process, um, you know, I think that those are two, two different, two things that. You know, I'm happy to look into.
Yeah. Well, I think what we're trying to do is both. So, you know. Until this ordinance language is written. You know, have the process in place where, you know, there's just, don't take any more trees down. And, until we have a good process about it. Um, so I'm confused. So the, the ordinance. Uh, subcommittee does both and then brings it back to you? All the council members, is that, is that my understanding? Is that correct?
Yep, it, it, any recommendation that we would make would go back to the full council, yes.
And you will address the moratorium and the ordinance review?
We could, uh, we could address it. It's just, I want to make sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted all our Is on the issue. Um, I, I haven't done a ton of research into what a moratorium would look like, uh, but it's something that we'd have to, I think, look at.
Stop cutting the trees. That's a moratorium. So I, I don't know. I don't know where it's appropriate for, to which agenda it's appropriate for.
It, it has to go to rules and ordinances.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Cala. I think you're muted, Director Cala.
Sorry about that. I pressed the wrong key on the computer. I, I just, um, again, I'm not the tree warden, uh, but I, 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 I just want to add that. The, the, the tree warden is, is, is a state requirement for every town to have a tree warden and the state grants. Certain discretion to the tree warden, like I said, for mainly for dead and dangerous, you know, uh. All trees that are not deemed dead and dangerous need to go through that hearing process, but putting a moratorium in place. Also creates liability for the town. If, I mean, now you're taking discretion away from somebody that. May see a danger that now can't act on it and. The town will have that liability. So the moratorium really needs to be looked at very closely and, and worded. Very specifically, um, the tree ordinance, I, 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 I think it's. A worthwhile endeavor if you want to look into, you know, some sort of tree ordinance, but the state law does, i- i- is what. You know, this whole process comes from. So just wanted to make that liability point known because there is liability when you don't act.
Yep. Thank you very much for those comments. Uh, so, um. If there's any other public comment, you can do so by raising your hand or pressing star six, uh, with Diana, uh, again.
Yeah, so sorry, so sorry, just a point of clarity. So any, any trees that are dangerous or, uh, causing a risk to public safety. Would be an exception to a moratorium, just to make sure that's clear for everyone. Thanks.
Okay, Susan Wolverton. I think you're muted, Susan.
Sorry about that. Um, my concern about this, the review of the moratorium is that it may come a little bit late. Because the tree committee meeting is on the seventh. And that's when voting on four mature trees will happen. So I'm not sure that. A moratorium would happen soon enough.
Okay. Um, I appreciate those, uh, comments. It's just that's. Those are the realities that we're kind of under. Um. So is there any further, uh, public comments for tonight? Okay, seeing none, is there anything from the counselors under public relations and upcoming events? Counselor Lettieri.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I just want to, this is, uh, senior week for winter high school. It's, um. You know, it's been a long year for these kids. It's been a long year and a half for a lot of these kids. Um, I just want to wish them all the best as they graduate on Friday night. Um, I know tonight is the prom and there are other senior week festivities going to be occurring during the weekend. Again, I just, uh, give them my heartfelt congratulations on, uh. Going above and beyond during some crazy times. I wish them all the best in their future endeavors.
Thank you. I think we all can agree that, that, um, and we all get behind those sentiments as well. Um, any further general, uh, public relations and upcoming events, anyone? Okay. Um, it, under that, we have town hall is open to the public from Monday through Wednesday from eight o'clock in the morning to four thirty. Tuesday through Thursday, Tuesday and thir- excuse me, I'll say that again, Monday and Wednesday from eight o'clock to four thirty. And Tuesday to Thursday from eight AM to seven PM. Beginning on June fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the town council will be holding in-person meetings. Um, and immediate openings for several town committees, please contact. The town council office for more information on that. Okay, uh, e- unless there's anything else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Okay, seconded by counselor DeMarco. Will the clerk please call the roll on adjournments?
Counsel Ruggiero.
Yes.
Counsel Flocke.
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco.
Yes.
Counsel Lettieri.
Yes.
Counsel Honan.
Yes.
Counsel LaConte. Counsel Frino.
Yes.
Vice President Christopher.
Yes.
President Boncory. Thank you.